It is six o'clock and the Kerrville City Council is now in session. Councilmember Kim Clarkson will lead us in prayer and the pledge. If you'll stand, please.
Dear God, we come to you tonight with humble hearts. And I ask you tonight to keep all of us in our community, in our nation, and in the world safe. And help us all to find peace and to remember that we are in this together. And help us bring out the best in each other and find the best in ourselves and find ways to unify instead of divide each other. I want to especially thank you for the first responders who have been so critical, not only now but always. I ask that you watch over our children and our families, our teachers and our staff as we begin to think about returning to school. I ask that you watch over the elderly, especially those in nursing homes that can't see their family, haven't seen them in months, and just pray that they feel your loving arms. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic and emergency situation we are all dealing with, we're thankful that we have a way for the public to remain engaged and participate in open council meetings in various ways. Citizen or public participation has been available by calling in, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox before 5:45. All of these instructions are provided online in the agenda. Any questions that citizens and visitors might have may not be responded to until after public comments have concluded and if a member of the council raises the question. Finally, we have attempted to omit any nonessential items from the agenda like announcements, open public forum, and items for future agendas. Instead, citizens and the public are always welcome to contact the city via our website, city app, email, and phone to make comment or ask questions on any subject. We ask for your patience regarding any difficulties that may arise. And I also want to say that it is our hope, if there's not a large spike of COVID-19 cases, that we will return to open council meetings with citizens present in September. At this time, we are going to see a video in regard to another Kerrville Kindness Award. The City Council will now be regularly presenting a new Kerrville Kindness Award in order to honor the many individuals who have given and continue to give so much of their time and service to Kerrville. I do want you to know that the council members will be making these recommendations. And also, we're going to arrange for a small council delegation to personally present the recognition to Beth Palmer, the first recipient. At this time, we're going to hear from Mario Obleto.
Mr. Obleto, are you on the line? Please state your name and address, and you now have four minutes.
Well, thank you very much. Hopefully y'all can hear me. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words this evening on the recognition and this award, if you will. For the record, my name is Mario Obleto Jr., and I'm Chief of Government and Public Affairs at your San Antonio Food Bank. And on behalf of our President and CEO, Eric Cooper, our board, our organization, thank you for the leadership that you provide to the citizens of Kerrville. You know, we're part of Feeding America, the country's safety net, so a little bit over 200 food banks across the country. And in our great state of Texas, we're part of Feeding Texas, our state association. So all 254 counties are covered by a food bank service territory. We are one of 21 in our great state of Texas. The San Antonio Food Bank covers 16 counties in southwest Texas. Within that 16-county footprint, we worked with large grocery retailers like HEB, food manufacturers, processors, wholesalers, resellers, farmers, and ranchers to get food into the food bank. And then we get that food out by partnering up with about 530 nonprofit organizations within that 16-county footprint. 501(c)(3) organizations like Soup Kitchen Shelter, Senior Centers, the majority of them are faith-based, located at a church known as Food Pantries. And I just want to recognize some of the organizations there in Kerrville, up in Kerrville and in Kerr County that we've partnered with over the years, and that's the Salvation Army of Kerrville, CAM in Kerrville, St. Vincent de Paul, Kerr County, K-Star, Inc., a Child's Place Learning Center, Pathways, 3H Youth Ranch, First United Methodist Church up in Kerrville, Happy Jacks, Inc., and Hill Country Crisis Council. We couldn't do what we do without partnering up with the nonprofit organizations. And you have some great ones up in your community that help us nourish those in need. You know, before the pandemic hit, we were assisting nearly 58,000 individuals in any given week in terms of emergency food assistance. And that number has nearly doubled, 120,000 we are now assisting. I mentioned the 530. Now with the pandemic, we are down about 40% of those partners within our 16-county footprint in southwest Texas. You know, Beth Palmer's name was mentioned, folks like John McHale as well at St. Vincent de Paul. But Beth is, I use her as an example a lot when I'm out and about in the community in my role of government relations and public affairs, connecting with elected officials on all levels of government, city, county, state, and federal, just creating awareness on who we are, how we work, and how we help. And I talk about Beth, and she knows this. You know, her work over the years with First United Methodist Church and now Light on the Hill, Mustard Seed Program, it's been a blessing to have her and others rally around the cause and the need to fight hunger during this crisis. As some of you know from being out at the distributions that we've been conducting with her since the start of the pandemic, really amazing hunger relief efforts taking place in your community. Mayor, I want to thank you for the support, being out there. I know council members Judy Eichner and Delane Seigerman also have been out there. I'm going to be out there at the end of the month. I've been making our way around our service territory in communities. Tomorrow morning, I'll be in Wilson County in Florisville with some of the council members down there, nourishing their community. But I will be up in your community at the end of the month, and I look forward to seeing y'all. I do want to thank the council members too, Judy and Delane, for the support regarding the Kerrville Food Relief Hotline. Those type of efforts really go a long way in nourishing and fighting hunger and food insecurity, especially now with the pandemic and a lot of folks losing their job. They're coming to us, new clients. And so, we've been prepared, we've been pivoting, we've been adjusting, and we're going to continue to serve your community as long as the need is there. We've had elected officials from Senator Cornyn, Chip Roy, state senators, state reps, county commissioners, judges, mayors, council members throughout our 16 counties, all rolling up their sleeves at distributions and giving their time and their sweat equity and helping putting those grocery products in people's cars as they come through. So without y'all, we couldn't do what we do. Just want to say thank you for the recognition this evening. Look forward to being out with y'all at the end of the month.
All right, thank you, Mario. We're going to go to a video at this point, okay?
Thank you, Mario.
All right, thank you very much. And that video was filmed at Mount Wesley. And I want to say again a special word to two of our council members, Judy Eichner and Delane Seigerman, for their excellent work in helping to get food to people that need it during this time. Since we have seen the video and heard Mario, I'm not going to read all of this, I'll read just a bit of the proclamation that is, we're making to San Antonio Food Bank. Fighting hunger is the San Antonio Food Bank's number-one priority, but it also serves to educate and provide assistance through a variety of programs and resources available to families, individuals, seniors, children, and military members in need. Since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, the San Antonio Food Bank has delivered more than 160,000 pounds of food to Kerrville and the surrounding area. What a work, and how many people have been helped. Let's move to the consent agenda. This will be voted on together unless a council member or citizen asks for an item to be pulled.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, you're motioning for the...
I make a motion that we pursue.
Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Motion for the consent agenda and second. Okay, all in favor? That'd be known by the raised hand. Okay, for information and discussion, and that's the end of the consent agenda, we're now going to look at the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. Ms. McAlhannon, did I do that right?
Yes, sir. Presentation, excuse me, presentation of the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget.
All right, good. Okay. City Manager, Martin McDaniel.
So, Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to be before you once again to talk about what we have proposed for next year. As you can see by the theme of this budget, it is the "Community Strong" theme. I want to publicly thank Kerrville citizens, the City Council and staff for stepping up to make a difference during this very difficult time. It's indeed been a time we've all pulled together. We've now been at this for six months with this pandemic under the emergency declaration, we were officially in a recession. But we've all been pulling together for the health and welfare of our community and working with each other for the good of Kerrville, both now and long term. You will see very little change today from what we discussed in prior workshops. It is still a very austere budget with a focus on providing essential services and finishing up projects already started. Now, looking at the calendar, you can see that we started this year's budget process all the way back in March. We didn't do this in prior years, but we felt the need to go ahead and get started early, given what was going on. This has enabled the document before you to become not my proposed budget, but really reflection of the council's direction over all of these past few months as well. You will note that there is one public hearing for the budget per the charter in Texas Government Code. And then while no public hearing is required for the tax rate because it does not exceed the lower of the new, the no new revenue rate or the voter approved rate, the adoption of the tax rate will be a separate agenda item, and of course, the public will be allowed to comment on it. The tax ordinance and the budget ordinance are separate readings, two readings, and two votes, and then we wrap up on September 8th before our new fiscal year starts on October 1st. Before I dive into more details on the proposed budget, I just want to recap our current situation. As I said before, we are now in a recession, and actually, it began all the way back in February. We currently anticipate that we'll have $2.2 million shortfall for fiscal year 20 that we're in now, which includes all funds. That's in particular, the hotel occupancy tax fund, the water fund, in addition to the general fund. For the general fund alone, we anticipate $1.5 million shortfall. Additional unemployment benefits expired at the end of July, but the president has signed a new executive order extending some of those benefits. Still, it's uncertain what the impact those orders might be, or if there will be another stimulus bill. What is certain going into the next fiscal year is uncertainty about our economy, and so the best course of action is to conservatively protect revenues, cut expenditures, and not impose increases in taxes or major fees for service. And this is indeed what we are proposing. At a very high level on your screen now is a summary of the overall fiscal year 21 proposed budget. We're reducing the property tax rate to the state-defined no-new-revenue tax rate. We're decreasing our sales tax projections, no changes in water or sewer rates. We have lower expectations in terms of hotel occupancy tax projections, no merit raises, no cost of living adjustments, and no public safety step increases, although I would like to revisit this mid-year if fiscal trends improve. We also have a reduced employee count through hiring delays, an elimination of two vacant positions, and overall, a decrease of 5.25 positions due to eliminating those two positions and delaying hiring for others. As far as major initiatives, kind of outlined on page 12 of the document, you'll note that we plan to still pursue some of the major initiatives that have already been put into motion. Just to highlight a few on your screen, these include capital projects like Priority Street and Drainage Improvements, Olympic Drive, and development of a new water well in partnership with Headwaters Water Conservation District. We will also substantially finish out a proposed new subdivision code as a Kerrville 2050 follow-up effort, working with the Assistant Appointed Committee, and restart our new Neighborhood Enhancement Team efforts that had been delayed by the pandemic. This next slide is further explained on pages 26, 27, and 33 of the budget proposal. Proposed expenditures of $70.5 million and $61 million in outside spending, this is net of the interfund transfers, if you're not going to be counting those twice as expenditures. So, general fund, water fund, and capital projects account for 78% of these total expenditures, and general fund and water fund are balanced and meet reserve policy requirements. General funds, unreserved fund balance is projected at 30% of expenditures, and our goal or policy is 25. So, we're well above our policy, comfortably above our policy. Water fund cash and receivable balance is projected at 25% of expenditures. Our goal there is 25% as well. And water debt service is 31.4% of water fund revenues, and our limit, our self-imposed limit is 35%. So, we're above all of our, below all of our thresholds on that. Interfund transfers are $9.5 million, and these primarily make up transfers like group insurance, debt service, garage, administrative reimbursement for water fund to general fund and street use fee. I'll go into more detail in that in a minute. Okay, general fund revenues, these are on pages 59 through 62. Total revenue is projected to be approximately $28.1 million. This is actually a decrease of almost $700,000 or 2.4% compared to fiscal year 2020. Property tax and sales tax contribute 61.5% of total revenue, and we are seeing again decreases in sales tax, service revenue, fines and forfeitures, interest and miscellaneous and operating transfers in, so across the board. Sales tax in particular, a decrease of 6%, and this reflects our April sales that are net of an anomaly that regarding a particular taxpayer. So, we're basically just tracking our worst month of this year to use as a projection for next year. Service revenue, we are seeing a decrease of 4.8%. This is primarily due to ambulance supplement payment decrease. Fines and forfeitures, a decrease of almost 20%, and this is due to lower activity in the municipal court through fewer citations being issued and no court. And then interest in miscellaneous, a decrease actually due to primarily lower interest rates. And then the operating transferring is also a decrease because our overall general fund is lower. That means our transfer from water fund is lower as well. Let's talk about property tax next. We talked about at the beginning as far as the, you know, the state-defined no-new-revenue tax rate. That calculation comes out to be .5516, or 51 cents roughly, for $100,000 of valuation. But there still is an increase in property tax revenue due to new value. So, we saw 32, a little over $32 million in new value due to new construction in the current year. The increase in property tax does not exactly equal the new value times the tax rate because the no-new-revenue rate calculation has many other exceptions, including exclusions or inclusions for frozen property, changes in exemptions, refunds, lawsuits, annexations, deannexations, and more. You'll find a 15-page calculation of the no-new tax rate or new revenue rate, starting on page 353 of your document, and this has been certified by the Tax Assessor Collector. This next slide is a new chart illustrating how many, how much new value varies widely from year to year. You can see over time in this graph since 2010, how much new value has been added each year. For the coming year, as this slide indicates here, for '21, new value, 64% of that is single-family, '21's commercial, and '14 multi-family. Again, we are proposing a rate reduction to the no-new revenue rate of 51.16, that's .15116 for $100 of valuation. Net taxable value has actually increased 9.8%. That's the reason for the decline in the tax rate, to get to that no-new revenue rate, which means increased valuations are offset by the decreased rate. This is our rate reduction, a third rate reduction in four years, and the rate has stayed the same or actually decreased over 11 straight years. Also of note is our growing frozen values. 29% of taxable value has an over 65 tax ceiling, which includes commercial values, which are not eligible, obviously. And this equates to an impact next year of $460,000 to our tax revenue. Looking at it a little bit differently, over time, we have seen a 53% increase in frozen value since 2010, when it was adopted, and for the same period, we have seen a 41% increase in taxable value, by contrast. Now to sales tax. Again, we're projecting a 6% decline from fiscal year 20. This is equal, again, to the decline that we saw in June after results adjusted for individual taxpayer anomalies. That was April sales collected in June. And this, the Great Decession decline in 2010 by comparison was 8.2%. So, it's a little bit better than that. I think it's, could be better in terms of our overall collections, but again, as I've said on the, at the beginning here, we want to project our revenues conservatively, given the uncertainty about this coming year. On the expenditure side, we are proposing a balanced budget, so proposed expenditures equal $28.1 million. Public safety and streets account for 64.7% of expenditures, which is typical for most cities. And then the ending unrestricted fund balance is projected to be 29.9%. I mentioned, it's rounded to 30%, I mentioned that earlier. This also counts for Development Services Fund, because Development Services Fund receives a subsidy to balance. We include that in our projection, and that's why we don't carry a fund balance in Development Services. Significant changes to general fund expenditures compared to years past. We're eliminating merit, step, and COLA increases, that's about $523,000. Two vacant positions that I mentioned earlier, one in municipal court and the other one in finance, $91,000. Delayed hiring, $240,000. We do have an increase in insurance of $174,000 and an increase in our retirement contribution of $47,000. An increase in annual pay budget of $50,000, we're now up to $1.8 million, and decreases in budget for supplies and services, as you see there. For our separate general capital projects fund, the primary fiscal year 21 proposed expenditures include the year one of streets and the year one of drainage improvements, Olympic Drive, the Clock Tower Enclosure Sports Complex improvements. And then the funding for these projects are below, so the funding comes in all at one time typically, and then the expenditures, you know, occur over multiple years. And so, you can see the sources of those projects, the funding for those projects below. On asset replacement, you see a list of proposed asset replacement expenditures on this slide. There's no change from what you saw in your last workshop, so these are identical. We had hoped to do three patrol vehicles, and that's what we're doing. Early on, it was just one, and as we started balancing, we determined we could afford three, and that's what they need, is three, to keep their schedule on course. Same thing with the dump trucks, we weren't sure we could do those at all, and we included those. And again, those were included at your last workshop. On the general debt service fund, no new debt. For general debt, the debt portion of the property tax will remain unchanged, as it has for many years, at seven cents. And refund, we're looking at refunding the Series 2012 debt, which is EIC-supported, so it may lower the debt service even further. The general debt service fund is, balance is budgeted to actually be reduced, and so that was for the current year, so that's why we're seeing an increase this year to kind of build that balance back up, and that's the change there. No requirements on the amount of fund balance is, are to be kept in this fund, but it's highly recommended by our financial advisor, as well as the bond rated agencies, to have some level of balance in here. Just to give an example, you know, when Hurricane Harvey came through, a lot of cities couldn't pay their debt because they didn't have enough carryover funds in their fund balance on debt service. And so, we typically try to keep at least our next payment in our fund balance for this fund. This is a comparison of how we kind of stack up against our peers that are of similar size and also have a double-A bond rating. As you can see, we have some of the lowest debt of Texas cities that are similar size. Now moving on to the water fund. This is our second-largest fund, but the budget is balanced at $13.1 million in revenues to expenditures. Again, no changes in water sewer rates. There's $27,000 or a .2% change from last year's budget. Transfers out for debt service are actually less, just because of the way that the debt is structured. And then transfers out to the general fund for reimbursements, again, are less because the overall general fund is less. And any decreases that we've seen in terms of cuts are offset by some increases in medical insurance, the same retirement contribution, but also chemicals, utilities, like electricity in particular, and maintenance. With regard to water and sewer revenues, we are projecting the total revenue budget at $13.1 to balance expenditures, water sales at $49.5, and then sewer sales at $44.1. We did adjust our modeling. You recall, last year, we restructured rates, didn't increase them, but restructured them. And so, we're kind of tweaking our model based upon actual experience, and that's why we're going to see a downturn in water revenue, yet an uptick in sewer revenue once we kind of see how the rates have played out. Other revenue includes waste disposal fees paid by septic haulers who dump their waste at our sewer treatment plant at four feet. So, to summarize, water fund expenditures, just like with general fund, no proposed salary adjustments and no new personnel. The chemical increases are at the water reclamation plant due to higher prices for some increase in volume. And electric increase at water production and wastewater collections due to actual experience. And then professional services increase due to TCEQ's requirement for a risk and a resiliency assessment. And then maintenance increases in utility billing due to the replacement of meter boxes, lids, and antennas. On capital projects for water and sewer, this is detailed on pages 192 through 199. Again, these are all the items that you saw back in your workshop, your last... Again, these are all the items that you saw back in your workshop, your last workshop. I'll go through all of them, but, you know, we have things like the finish out of the Ellenberger Well, we've got the NAP wastewater collection projects that are a large-ticket item, the Guadalupe River crossing, and so forth. On the water asset replacement fund, there is one change here, the first item there in the picture, you see the VACcon cleanser. This was added as a, in response to the council's input at your last workshop. This, the list of program purchases that you see here assumes an additional $70,000 transfer at the end of fiscal year '20. This may not, we may not make the budget on revenues. If that happens, then we probably will have enough reduced expenditures to make that transfer. If not, we just won't purchase this, this item, and we'll wait until it's late enough to do that. With regard to water fund or water debt service fund, the debt service is 4.1 million, or again, 31.4% of water fund revenue, below the target of 35% maximum. And then again, we have our refunding opportunity for 2012 and 2013 debt issuances, which would create a possible savings of, at last count, $700,000. Okay, hotel occupancy tax fund on, you know, page 208. The hotel occupancy tax fund and lodging industry have been hit hard, as we all know, but they're still showing signs of comeback. Not knowing where that's going to go, we are budgeting 10% lower than, than actual fiscal year 2019. Fiscal year '21 includes funding for the CBB at a reduced rate, a 10% reduced rate, the arts co-op at a 17% decrease, events, $181,000 decrease. Playhouse 2000 is steady at $100,000. We do have an events program coordinator that we, we found out of this, that we kept level, and then sports tournament promotions kept level at the $25,000. With regard to the separate golf fund, we have a new golf cart lease completed this year. You all voted on that, I know you remember that, and so we'll be putting that into next year's budget. Small rate increase of $1 to $2 for green fees and cart fees next year. And then the course maintenance staff restructuring has reduced our part-time hours and resulted in expenditures in the current year, a decrease in expenditures in the current year. The library memorial fund is a dedicated fund for only library expenditures, and all other expenditures are funded through private donations. And so it's really handy that you have a fund like this that can pay for things like HVAC replacement, lighting improvements, the damage to the stairs going down to the river behind the library, vehicle, books, and so forth. So what a tremendous asset to have that fund available to us. And I know this is going to be hard to see, but this is all other funds. This is a composite slide, obviously, and most all of these are dedicated for all these certain eligible expenditures. Other funds include special revenue and internal service type funds. They have designated fund balances that must be used for specific purposes, as I said earlier. Municipal Court Special Revenue Fund includes $13,000 for expenses related to child safety, and that will come from the new vehicle registration fee passed by the county here recently. We'll also try to use that funding to do more crosswalk striping. So, the calendar again. Our next step would be to come back to you at your next meeting and have that public hearing and, on August 25th, as well as first reading on the tax and budget ordinances. And then today, you do have as your next agenda item, the adoption of a resolution setting forth the ad valorem tax rate to be, to be considered for adoption, not the actual adoption, but just to consider it, and then calling the public hearing for the budget as required by the charter and state law. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, council, do you have any questions?
No, just, again, once again, thank you, staff. I know it's been a difficult series of months, and Ms. Dozier, thank you, and Mark, and EA, and everybody that's been involved. It's, I've been so impressed with your professionalism and your willingness to trim where it had to be trimmed, and those aren't easy decisions to make, and I just, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yes, great job. I want to say also, I have a neighbor friend of mine who is always keeping great tabs on what we're doing through the internet, through the website, he was able to, you know, look at the budget. And he had some questions, and we cleared up his questions with great answers, but his last comment to me was, please let Ms. Dozier know and her team that she does a fine job all year long, but particularly during this budget period. He's always so impressed with you, and he's not an easy man to impress, so I just wanted to pass on that compliment from someone outside of my home.
Yes, it is so carefully done and thoroughly, and of course, outside audit, and every year, state awards for the budget and for the transparency. I have one question, and that is, we've got expenditures of $70,492,87, and then listed, those are expenditures, and then revenues of $58,162,70 for a difference of $12,330,17. How, how is that explained?
So, as I mentioned earlier, we do require that our general fund and our water operating funds be balanced, current revenues to current expenditures. But there are several funds, primarily our capital project funds and our asset replacement funds, that we get the revenue all at one time, and then next several years, or multiple years, we're spending that down. So in this next year, you're going to, we have an extra 7.7 million in capital projects because of the COs that were issued earlier. And then in water capital projects, another 3.4 million above the revenues for the current year, based upon the NAP road, the residual off of the Legion lift station primarily, but some, also some other funds that have been accumulated. So on the capital funding, it's, it's multi-year, and so you can't really balance those each year. And that's, that's the most of the difference. There are some other special purpose funds, like the Calotheater Endowment Fund, or the Library Memorial Fund that I just mentioned, that's been accumulating funds for a long time. So those are not current revenues to current expenditures, because the revenues come in before you spend the money, and you usually spend that money over multiple years.
All right, thank you. Council, anything else before we go to questions of the public?
I haven't offered my thanks, but trying, not to repeat anybody else, just to add to that, in the tough decisions, I just hope that our citizens understand that we heard them, that we know that property values went up. We didn't have any control over that, but some tough decisions were made here, including things that affect every single one of you as employees, and it really makes me so thankful and proud of you, and I know that there are a lot of tough decisions that were made to get this budget balanced, so thank you.
Thank you. And as I said at the beginning of this presentation, it's all of us doing it together. We've been, we're at this for several months, and thanks for all your support.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, then, no action is required on that, because that action will come later. However, you have this, and Ms. McLeannan, will you read in that resolution number 17-2020?
Resolution number 17-2020, a resolution setting forth the ad valorem property tax rate to be considered for adoption for the 2020 tax year. Said rate to be the new, the no new revenue tax rate, calling a public hearing prior to the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget, as required by both the city's charter and the state law. And we do have one citizen emailed comment on this item.
Okay, all right, we'll come back to that. Ms. Densher, at Financies for the City?
All right. Well, you've just heard a great deal about the budget, and so this resolution really is just publicly stating your intent for the next steps. So when we're talking about a resolution, this is a resolution to set a proposed rate. You're not actually voting on the tax rate, you're just saying this is the rate that we're going to propose, as well as setting a time for a public hearing and a notice regarding the public hearing. Any questions?
Okay. All right, we have a public comment?
Yes, sir. Bruce Strakey emailed his comment. The executive director for general operations, Kim Weizmer, will be reading his comment.
Okay.
Okay, it's an email from Bruce Strakey, 615 Earl Garrett Street. In these difficult times, we are all struggling to stay connected, rooted to our community, associates, and our friends. As we see in the news, so many towns and cities around us are falling into destructive patterns. It is easy to think our world is coming apart, yet here in Kerrville, you five actively lead our community forward through these uncertain times. Our staff, regional medical center, and citizens all look to this city council and see models to emulate. Kerrville kindness, proactive programs addressing the changes we face, embracing the challenges we can all conquer together. This budget, reducing the tax rate, essentially freezing the city's taxes at last year's levels, is only one example. This city council has faced adversity no other has addressed in my time here, and we recognize your efforts. Your community appreciates your careful guidance and sage leadership. When other towns and cities are coming undone at the scenes on the nightly news, you all keep our community safe, rooted, and connected. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce. Those are good words, you're appreciated. No other public comments?
No, sir.
All right. Then do I hear a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 17-2020.
Second.
Second.
All right, good, second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, raised hand. All right, thank you, any that's unanimous. Yeah, Ms. McLeannan, if you'll read this one.
Briefing and possible action as to the city's ongoing preparedness in response to COVID-19 coronavirus. And we do have one citizen signed up to speak over Zoom.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'll be briefing my presentation tonight. Not much has changed since I last updated you on COVID-19. So I'll primarily give you a report on our active cases, testing, and then the positivity rates that we're looking at going into the week. For the week of August 3rd through 9th, there were a total of 118 tests conducted in Kerr County. 14 confirmed positive, that differs a little from what Kerrville Daily Times actually reported from the county this morning, and it's a result of the difference in a few days, what they were reporting on and what we actually track here in the city of Kerrville. And the result of that was 11.8% positivity rate. Last update, I gave you a snapshot of what July looked like, and you can see the first week of August, our tests are down, our positivity rate is up, but the thing that we need to focus in on is that if you look at the total number of positive cases for the first week of August in comparison to the last week of July, it's less than half of what it was at that time. August the 11th, at the close of business today, when we got the numbers in, 4:30 this afternoon, we're at a total of 414 confirmed cases. Right now, we have 30 active cases in Kerr County, six deaths, and there are six hospitalized at Peterson. These are the results from the testing that was conducted by Curative Incorporated. You may recall from previous updates, I mentioned that the Texas Military Department would no longer be doing it, it's taken over by the private sector now. So the testing that took place August 5th at the youth event center, there was a total of 283 tests conducted. For Kerr County, 239, 11 positive, and a 4.8% positivity rate.
Let me, Chief, I, I went out and was, was tested at the youth center on August 5th, and it, it was really very quick, and it was the swabs in the mouth instead of the, you know, the, the other form of test, but felt like it, oh, very good, and I'm negative, so.
Chief, just, just make sure I understand, so in the previous slide, it was 11.8% positivity rate for one set of testing?
So the 11.8% positivity rate, that was for the previous week, I think it's August 3rd through 9th. So that's for the week, everything in Kerr County. This is just the testing that was done at the youth event center on August 5th.
Okay.
That's pulled out? Is that what you're asking?
Do what?
You're asking if that's pulled out from the totals?
Well, it just, that's a pretty significant difference when you, from a percentile standpoint.
Yeah, look at the volume of testing, the 283 tests in comparison to.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay. So, was, did I miss something?
No, no, I'm just, I understand.
So it's, it's two different sample periods is what happened, and looking at the entire week for Kerr County, and then just one particular day.
One particular day.
For.
So the, the 11.8 or whatever it was is cumulative for all the testing centers, the...
That's everything that we're getting from CPL. CPL does the testing for Peterson.
Peterson Hospital.
Franklin Clinic, but that does not include what's done by Curative.
Now, is the...
The Texas Military Department.
Would the other one be the, the nasal swab? Or are they also doing just the mouth swab?
What Peterson does, they're still doing the nasal swab.
Nasal.
These, what Curative is going to now is what the mayor described, they're doing the cheek swab.
It's just interesting. Okay, thank you.
Is one faster than the other as far as results?
Um, yes and no.
I, I, my test was on Wednesday, and I got the email on Friday about the result.
You may recall when, when we first started with the Texas Military Department testing, they were turning it around in 24 to 48 hours, and then they, the testing expanded to such a massive number that eventually moved to three days, to five days, to a week. The reason, one of the reasons they moved to the private sector is because certainly the cheek swab goes a lot faster, so they can do a lot more testing in a shorter period of time, but the turnaround time has been substantially quicker too, so it can be.
I would think you would have more people voluntarily doing the cheek swab too, because it's, it's so less invasive. I mean, I don't know if that played a factor in people going to be tested, but it would me. I mean, I'm just saying, I think, so you think it's pretty, they're very, they're just the same, just different technique? You feel like they're pretty much the same kind of test?
You mean in terms of...
It's reliability.
My preference, if I had to get one, I would probably want the cheek swab as a...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But in terms of...
Accountability, you think the, they're both the same, equally effective?
Yeah, I think both, the cheek swab, you know, it has a, a higher, you know, pretty high rate of, you know, being accurate as opposed to the nasal swab also, so.
Okay.
You don't lose anything in terms of, you know, accuracy.
Okay, good.
And then finally, you know, we, we can't overemphasize, you hear it from me, you hear it from the mayor, you hear it from everybody in the community, but Peterson, you know, COVID-19 is still a threat, and it's still spreading, you know, in Texas, and we just can't place enough emphasis on taking the necessary precautions. And, you know, if you're in public and you can't maintain the recommended six-foot social distance, and, you know, it's highly recommended that you wear a mask. And I'll take any questions you might have for me.
One question I've got. Our positivity rate was 17.8% July the 12th, and last week it was at 11.8. What, when, when did the alarm bells go off in regard to positivity rate?
Okay, so the initial recommendation requirement that we got from the state of Texas regarding positivity rates was, the benchmark they gave is if you hit a 12% or higher positivity rate for five consecutive weeks, then that triggers an alarm bell and the potential to impact, you know, what we do in terms of the occupancy. and the potential to impact, you know, what we do in terms of the occupancy rates in our businesses. So 12% for five consecutive weeks, RE the three positive cases per 1,000 citizens in Kerr County.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have a comment?
Yes, sir. William Speaker, Renee, are you on the line? Please state your name, your address, and you now have four minutes.
Hello? Hi, this is Renee Brooks-Faboso, Massey, also known as the Yard Art Lady. Man, you know, Bruce Strakey always manages to just get in there and say all those positive things that I've been thinking, but that's okay, because the more the merrier, really. I'll just go ahead and read off pretty much what I had jotted down, and something that I've just been thinking about constantly during these times. At a time where so many things are uncertain in this world due to this pandemic, being witness to and affected by the constant craziness of contradicting truths, facts, fake news, what have you, people's opinions, the one thing that has been able to really bring me home and ground me has been to just look out my door at my community and, of Kerrville. Because, sorry, because seeing what the city of Kerrville has been doing, you all have, have managed to, for me personally, ground me, make me feel safe and comforted by your actions, your consistency. It's something that is so lacking everywhere else, but it's definitely not here. I mean, I can look on the Kerrville city website, and I can get all the information I need, and if for some reason there isn't something, I can reach out to a council member, and you all will actually answer my calls, and you all will talk to me, you will, you know, get questions answered. I can turn on the Kerrville Daily Times and see Councilwoman Cam Clarkson talking about what's going on. I mean, it's just everywhere. The consistency is just everywhere here locally, which is exactly where I need it to be, because, you know, this is my community. Seeing Delaine, Ms. Delaine T. Zimmerman and Ms. Judy Eichner literally out there handing out bags of food to our community, and not just our community, but those who've come from other communities, like literally handing bags of food to few people. The mayor, Bill Blackburn, giving daily, you know, or giving prayers to the city and updates constantly. It, it's, it's literally saved me from going down a dark tunnel throughout all of this. So I just really want to say thank you, because every single one of you, council members, and especially city staff, have been doing exactly what we need as citizens, which is you're just, you're there for us, you see us, and you hear us, and, and you're a part of us. I mean, we're all in this together, you know, and I appreciate being seen, so thank you.
Thank you for calling. Thank you.
Renee, all right.
Great way to end a meeting.
This time, would you read in 5A, Ms. McLeannan?
Appointment of Kerrville-Kerr County Joint Airport Board Member requested by Airport Manager Mary Rohr, and we do have three citizen speakers signed up for this item.
All right, okay. Is Mary calling in?
Yes.
Okay.
Mary, go ahead and state your name and address, and you now have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Actually, I'm going to hand the baton over to Jim Mann. He will introduce our new proposed board member for your review, and that's Scott Shellhays. So those would be the folks that would be making the presentation tonight.
Jim, go ahead and state your name and address, and you now have five minutes.
Hi, this is Jim Manns, and thank you, Mayor, and council people, for allowing us to present a new board member for the airport. As you know, Keith Miller will be locating to North Carolina, and that's closer to his family, and he has resigned from the airport board. We appreciate Keith Miller and his contribution, he's done an excellent job. But the board has, presents to you Scott Shellhays to complete the unexpired term of, which ends May 31st, 2021. Scott is a architect, he's a Texas Tech graduate, he's a pilot, he's an aircraft owner, and he is well qualified to serve on our airport board, and I would submit his name for your approval.
Okay, council, questions? Just real brief word, I talked to Scott Shellhays. Many people know him because of his connections to this community and his parents, General Shellhays and his late mother Barbara, and he comes with high recommendation from the airport board. Okay, we have three people to comment?
Yes, sir. We also have Scott Shellhays. Scott, please state your name and address, and you now have four minutes.
Hi. Yes, ma'am, I'm over here, Mayor and Council, and Mark, City Manager. I just appreciate the, the opportunity that has been afforded us to, to be here in this community, and we're looking forward to becoming more involved in our community, and I am just thrilled to be able to, to offer what I can to the, to the airport, to the, and to the airport board, but especially to Mary, our airport manager. And I just, I thank you for, for the opportunity to, to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Another comment?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's it? Okay, all right. Okay, council, what is your recommendation on this? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Scott Shellhays as a member of the Kerr County Joint Airport.
Okay, Cochran, then Agnew.
My second.
Okay.
Delighted to second.
Welcome aboard.
All in favor, raise the right hand, and passes unanimously. Okay.
See you at the farmer's market tomorrow.
Okay, I want to ask the council, you would like to go into executive session or adjourn?
Maybe we adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay, you want to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned.